Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get started with the formal part of the meeting, we have the pleasure of some proclamations this evening. So if I could ask Christina Heaton and her daughters to come forward. Christina is on our park board. Right there's good. Hi. All right. So, whereas Kids to Park Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, is held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Park Day empowers and encourages families to get outdoors, visit Beaver Creek's parks, and realize the importance of introducing a new generation to our community parks. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood, excuse me, childhood obesity, diabetes, and other health problems. And whereas, Kids to Park Day is open to all children and adults across the country and our community to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas, Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 19th, 2018, Kids to Park Day, in the City of Beaver Creek, and urge residents to participate in the Kids Fishing Derby, as well as visit the parks and traffic, or trails that truly make the city a beautiful and enjoyable community to live in. So I'd like to present this to you. And would you have any comments you would like to make?
Just that I appreciate the dedication that the City of Beaver Creek shows to parks in general, and then with the students and kids coming up. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
We appreciate your service on the board as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I would like to ask Officers Klein and Durkin and Sergeant Darko to come forward. And it is National Police Week. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I have a proclamation I'd like to read to you. Whereas, the Congress of the United States has designated May 15th of each year to be Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the Beaver Creek Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Beaver Creek. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our agency organize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the Beaver Creek Police Department has grown to be a modern and nationally accredited law enforcement agency, and that the men and women of the Beaver Creek Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with the entire city council, do proclaim the week of May 13th through 19th, 2018, as National Police Week in the City of Beaver Creek, and further call upon all citizens of Beaver Creek to observe Tuesday, May 15th, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Sir, I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you.
And if you would like to make comments, any one of you, all of you. It goes up the rank, is that it?
Thank you very much for this, Mr. Stone. You know, we enjoy serving our community. We love it, all of us. We have a great department that stands behind us. We have a great community. You guys just do a phenomenal job of uplifting us, and so I thank you for this, and thank you, City Council.
Well, you're very welcome. We know here on council just how excellent this department is, and how much respect you all have from us. So, the proclamation is just to, so the public will know how much respect we have for your department as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is Mr. Tim Brown here? Please come forward. How are you?
Fine, how are you?
Very good. And you're with the Bike Week Committee, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, both of you. And you, your name?
Matt Anderson.
Matt, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
All right, well, this is Bike Week, I guess. You already know that, don't you? Well, I'm gonna make a proclamation just to be sure. So, whereas, more than, for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans. And whereas, the League of American Bicycleists has declared the month of May as National Bike Month to encourage Americans to experience the benefits of bicycling through community events, helmet promotions, educational programs, and other bicycling activities. And whereas, the City of Beaver Creek recognizes that bicycle riding is a valid form of both recreation and transportation, and that increased bicycle use is a simple way to improve the health of our residents, the quality of our air, and the vitality of our community. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2018, as National Bike Month. But in addition to that, we are declaring May 14th through May 18th Bike to Work Week. And one more addition, May 18th is Bike to Work Day. So congratulations to both of you, and thanks for your service on the Bike Week Committee. And I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Comments?
Just that, you know, we, the City of Beaver Creek and the whole Miami Valley are some of the best bike trails nationally, and it's a great way to get out and get exercise. I know it does a lot for all of us. And we'd like to thank the city for the support in those bike trails. In addition to that, the City of Dayton is holding their annual Bike to Work Day on Friday, from 7:00 to 9:00 at Riverside. They're having free pancake breakfast. There's a lot of festivities going on. We're organizing a couple of rides. One's gonna leave, that I'm gonna lead, is gonna leave Beaver Creek Station at 6:00 on Friday morning. So if you wanna get up bright and early and get some exercise, we're gonna pull out at 6:00 and ride down to Riverside. And we've got another member of the group who's going to, for those who wanna sleep a little more, we're gonna leave, they're gonna leave on 7:00 from Fifth Third Gateway Park up on, down the street here. So if anybody wants to come out, the weather's not looking too good, but you never know around here, come out, get some free pancakes, ride to downtown. It'll be a nice casual ride. Nobody's gonna be flying down there, so.
I think that about covers it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, if I can ask the Vice Mayor to join me here for a minute. And with all the, from, the individuals from the youth council, would you please come up here with us? All right, now, one, two, three, one, two, three, four. Some people are stuck in traffic. Do you think that's what it is? Would the, would the members of the youth council want to, I mean, the leaders that have started this, I know Carol has been part of this forever, and some of the others, would you like to come forward at all? Anybody that's part of the youth council, just come up here and stand behind the young ladies, please. Well, it's been my pleasure to work with a number of the individuals from the youth council, and it's always a joy. And the things you guys do for the senior center, for other areas of our activities in the Parks Department is just immeasurable is how nice that is, and makes our community a better place. So we have congratulatory letters. I believe you're all seniors, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So, what we have, we would like to commend and show our appreciation for the importance of community youth involvement. You engaged your talents, opinions, and desire to make a difference. Therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire city council, thank you for your service and dedication to the Beaver Creek community. And this is, we're gonna call you up by name and issue this, but I would like to shake your hand and say congratulations as you come forward. So Vice Mayor, would you please, start with this one, or, well, we know that one's not here.
We can read this off at the end. Is Emily Thomas?
If there's any parents that would like pictures, you're more than welcome to move around the room and get pictures. Thank you very much.
Stay up here.
Yes, yeah.
Felicia Mort? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Fortune?
He's a truck, he's a truck.
All right. Let's see who lost me here. I know you're not Isaac, right? Isaac Talent is another graduating senior. You're not Jacob Lewis either. Logan Pennington? Nicole Mansardo?
We had the top and the bottom of the list.
Noah Naxton? Valeria Bernunza?
The person is happy.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And two of our other graduating seniors that are not here right now is Chris Carenza and Austin Camden. So congratulations to all of them as well.
Would you all have anything you would like to address? I know you're seniors, so you're moving on in your life. Please tell us if you, you know, what you, you have an opinion on.
Yeah, I'd like to thank all of you for appreciating us and honoring us with the Beaver Creek Youth Council. Beaver Creek Youth Council, we try to make the world a better place by helping our community. Not only do we take joy out of helping our community, but we take joy out of seeing everyone's happiness and appreciation of our work.
Well, here, let's go.
Our mission is to make the world a better place, and small change everywhere.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Can we, can we come over here and join you for a picture?
I've got way too sensitive. This young group has learned leadership skills over the years that they have been members of youth council. They've done an exceptional job, and they don't tell you all the many, many activities that they actually do. And one of the things that I think is almost unbelievable is every year, they raise money at dancers and give thousands of dollars away to charities that they have chosen to help the community. And since I write the checks, this year, there have been over $2,400 that they have donated with more to come. So they are an exceptional group of young people.
Well, I second that immediately, and thank you guys for being here today.
Thank you.
For everything you do. All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Here she is.
You're welcome.
Okay, if we can call this meeting to order, please, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Litterell?
Here.
Councilmember Rushing?
Here.
Councilmember Upton?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Curran for the pledge. We'll stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd ask everyone for, to end, for a moment of silence to recognize the number of police officers in this country between 140 and 160 every year that give their lives for our citizens, and I would just ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we have an agenda before us. We did take, you may have recognized, seen it already, but we took the Creek Classic proclamation out, as Mr. Ankeny was unable to get here this evening, and we will try to do that at our next regular scheduled meeting. But any other corrections to the agenda?
Seeing no other corrections, I'll make a motion, make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the minutes, April 19th, April 9th, 2018, a regular scheduled meeting. Any corrections?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no comment, I would move for approval of the April 9th regular session, meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes from the April 9th regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Extentions, motion carries. Next, the minutes from the April 16th, 2018 work session. Any corrections?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no comment, I would move for approval of the April 16th work session meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the April 16th work session minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I have an extension.
I have an extension as well.
Okay. Extentions, too. Motion does carry. Thank you. Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordnance 18-05.
This is a third reading of an ordinance rezoning approximately 3.5 acres of land from R-1A1 Family Residential to MXPUD Mixed Use Planned Unit Development located at 1505 North Fairfield Road, further described as Book 5, Page 5, Parcel 126 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. This being the third reading, this is time-
I'm sorry. I read the wrong one. I scrolled too far.
Yeah, there are.
I read 1806 instead of 1805.
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
So let me read 1805.
Then we will do 1805.
Sorry. Which is a third reading still, but-
1805.
It is an ordinance to appropriate for public use all right title and interest in a certain parcel of property located at 3870 Southview Street, Beaver Creek, Ohio, for the purpose of acquiring these simple interests for an off-street parking facility in the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio. Sorry about that.
Thank you. All right, this is the third reading, so this is time for council to make any input. They might wish this motion, this ordinance approval was sponsored by Councilmember Van. So any comments from council? Seeing none?
Seeing no additional comment, I would move for approval of ordinance 18.
I agree.
I would move for approval of ordinance 1805.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-05. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Extentions, we're good, thank you. Now, ordinance 18-06.
Sorry. This is a second reading of an ordinance rezoning approximately 3.5 acres of land from R-1A1 Family Residential to MXPUD Mixed Use Planned Unit Development located at 1505 North Fairfield Road, further described as Book 5, Page 5, Parcel 126 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. All right, this is the second reading of this ordinance, which means it's a public hearing. So if there's anyone here tonight that would like to address council on this application, please come forward now. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes unless you have time to donate it. Does anyone want to talk to us about this ordinance? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Okay. Any comments from council? If not, this will move right on to the third reading. Seeing none, this moves to the third reading. Next, ordinance 18, or 18-07.
This is a second reading of an ordinance rezoning 2.402 acres of land from Commercial Plan Unit Development 124-86 to Commercial Plan Unit Development 18-2, located on the west side of S. Square Drive, approximately 250 feet north of the intersection of Lakeview Drive and S. Square Drive, further described as Book 4, Page 5, Parcel 14 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Once again, this is the second reading of this ordinance, so it is a public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on this application? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Any comments before council, before this moves on? In that case, this will move to the, on to the third reading. Next, ordinance 18-08.
This is a second reading of an ordinance repealing current Section 94.07 Unsolicited Printed Materials of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances and adapting new Section 94.07 Unsolicited Printed Materials of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances.
All right. Once again, second hearing, second reading, so it is a public hearing. Anybody here this evening that wants to address council on this issue? Seeing none, we will, this will move on to the third reading automatically. Mayor and council, if I can, council would ask, Vice Mayor had actually made the request, and council agreed that at the second reading, I would modify in Section B. 2, where it used to say, "Make a good faith effort to stop," it's now, "Within 60 days." So, we put a definite deadline, so.
And the form letter.
And there's a form letter also, which is not, council's not really adopting. I provide that more was sort of-
I appreciate that, thank you. I was gonna say, I like the way it's rewritten. I think that's still a little bit more beneficial.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think it looks good.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? So this then does move on to the third reading. Next item is Resolution 18-20.
This is a resolution to authorize the application for the Bulletproof Vest Partnership 2018 Federal Grant Program on behalf of the Beaver Creek Police Department.
Hello, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I have before you the Bulletproof Vest Grant, again, the federal grant to provide funding for 50% of the total cost of the city's purchase of approved bulletproof vests since March of 1999. When this process became available, we have taken advantage of the federal grant each year in defraying costs to the city on purchasing officers' bulletproof vests. To date, a total of $60,343 of federal money has been approved to aid in these purchases to our city. This year, we are anticipating purchasing 10 vests as replacement vests for patrol officers for a total cost of $8,230. The city's share would be 50% of that total, $4,115. Additional money is replaced in the police budget to defray the city's shared cost of these vests. Staff recommends council adopt this resolution, allowing the police department to make application for this federal grant opportunity. I would also add that, given this is Police Week, it's appropriate that we're discussing bulletproof vests. We're reminded almost on a daily basis of the dangers of this job. We had it over the weekend in Columbus, where Franklin County Sheriff's Deputy was shot on a routine traffic stop. So these vests are very, very important, and we appreciate how the city has committed to purchasing those vests as far back as I can remember, and I've been here since 1982. We do have to replace them every five years based on the manufacturer's recommendation, so these costs don't go down, they go up. But we do appreciate the city's commitment for that.
Thank you. Comments? We don't need to go in order. Anybody have anything they'd like to say?
I just, I appreciate the fact that every year that, well, every year that I've been here, we go for that grant, and it's a wonderful opportunity that the federal government provides, and that we follow up on by using those resources, so, and they are expensive, so.
I remember.
It's a nice, it's a true help to our budget when it comes to the police department.
Sure, the chief probably remembers. I think the first time the department ever had any vest was the FOPA.
That's correct.
And purchased them for you. So that goes back, I was beaten the streets into-
That's a lot years, and they were a lot heavier back then, too, I might add.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Okay?
All right, so I have a motion to approve Resolution 18-20 and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion does carry. Did anybody else have any comment they wanted to make? I'm sorry, I rushed it.
Me too.
Next, liquor permits.
All right, Mayor, I have a liquor permit request. It's a new one for Northwood LLC doing business as Our Taco. Ohio Division of Liquor Control sent police the notification, reference a new D1, D2, D3, D3A liquor permit for Northwood LLC doing business as Our Taco, 2760 Town Drive. The records checks required by the Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, were conducted on the business officer shareholders for this application request, and staff's recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
You do. I'd like to make a motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept without comment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, decision item, the first quarter financial summary.
The, we provided the copy of the first quarter 2018 financial summary, I think it was a week and a half, two weeks ago, to council. If there's any questions, Mr. Casera and myself are here to answer any questions.
Anyone? Okay, so do I have a motion to accept?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the first quarter 2018 financial summary.
Second. I have a motion and a second to accept the first quarter 2018 financial summary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Oh, we got board appointments here. Just one? Okay. So, we have appointments for the Youth Development Committee, so do I have a motion to open nominations?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second?
Motion and a second to open nominations for the Youth Development Committee. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Cherish Gillespie.
I would move that nominations be closed.
All right. We have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Can we, can we come over here and join you for a picture?
I've got way too sensitive. This young group has learned leadership skills over the years that they have been members of youth council. They've done an exceptional job, and they don't tell you all the many, many activities that they actually do.
Absolutely.
And one of the things that I think is almost unbelievable is every year, they raise money at dancers and give thousands of dollars away to charities that they have chosen to help the community. And since I write the checks, this year, there have been over $2,400 that they have donated with more to come. So they are an exceptional group of young people.
Well, I second that immediately, and thank you guys for being here today.
Thank you.
For everything you do. All right.
Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Here she is.
You're welcome.
Okay, if we can call this meeting to order, please, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Litterell?
Here.
Councilmember Rushing?
Here.
Councilmember Upton?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Curran for the pledge. We'll stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd ask everyone for, to end, for a moment of silence to recognize the number of police officers in this country between 140 and 160 every year that give their lives for our citizens, and I would just ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we have an agenda before us. We did take, you may have recognized, seen it already, but we took the Creek Classic proclamation out, as Mr. Ankeny was unable to get here this evening, and we will try to do that at our next regular scheduled meeting. But any other corrections to the agenda?
Seeing no other corrections, I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, decision item, the first quarter financial summary.
The, we provided the copy of the first quarter 2018 financial summary, I think it was a week and a half, two weeks ago, to council. If there's any questions, Mr. Casera and myself are here to answer any questions.
Anyone? Okay, so do I have a motion to accept?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the first quarter 2018 financial summary.
Second. I have a motion and a second to accept the first quarter 2018 financial summary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Oh, we got board appointments here. Just one? Okay. So, we have appointments for the Youth Development Committee, so do I have a motion to open nominations?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second?
Motion and a second to open nominations for the Youth Development Committee.[1191.12]
Application. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Any comments before counsel before this moves on? In that case, this will move to the, on to the third reading. Next, ordinance eighteen dash zero eight.
This is a second reading of an ordinance repealing current section ninety-four point zero seven unsolicited printed materials of the city Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances and adapting new section ninety-four point zero seven unsolicited printed materials of the city Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances.
All right. Once again, second hearing, second reading, so it is a public hearing. Anybody here this evening that wants to address counsel on this issue? Seeing none, we will, this will move on to the third reading automatically.
Mayor and counsel, if I can, counsel would ask, Vice Mayor had actually made the request, and counsel agreed that at the second reading, I would modify in section B two, where it used to say make a good faith effort to stop, it's now within sixty days, so we put a definite deadline.
Sure.
And the form letter.
And there's a form letter also, which is not, council's not really adopting, I provide that more was.
I appreciate that, thank you. I was gonna say, I, I like the way it's rewritten, I think that's a little bit more beneficial.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I think it looks good.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? So this then does move on to the third reading. Next item is resolution eighteen dash twenty.
This is a resolution to authorize the application for the Bulletproof Vest Partnership two thousand and eighteen federal grant program on behalf of the Beaver Creek Police Department.
Hello, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. I have before you the Bulletproof Vest Grant, again, the federal grant to provide funding for fifty percent of the total cost of the city's purchase of approved bulletproof vests since March of nineteen ninety-nine. When this process became available, we have taken advantage of the federal grant each year in defraying costs to the city on purchasing officers' bulletproof vests. To date, a total of sixty thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars of federal money has been approved to aid in these purchases to our city. This year, we are anticipating purchasing ten vests as replacement vests for patrol officers for a total cost of eighty-two hundred thirty dollars. The city's share would be fifty percent of that total, forty-one hundred and fifteen dollars. Additional monies were placed in the police budget to defray the city's shared cost of these vests. Staff recommends counsel adopt this resolution, allowing the police department to make application for this federal grant opportunity. I would also add that, given this is Police Week, it's appropriate that we're discussing bulletproof vests. We're reminded almost on a daily basis of the dangers of this job. We had it over the weekend in Columbus, where Franklin County Sheriff's Deputy was shot on a routine traffic stop. So these vests are very, very important, and we appreciate how the city has committed to purchasing those vests as far back as I can remember, and I've been here since nineteen eighty-two. We do have to replace them every five years based on the manufacturer's recommendation, so these costs don't go down, they go up, but we do appreciate the city's commitment for that.
Thank you. Comments? We don't need to go in order, anybody have anything they'd like to say?
I just, I appreciate the fact that every year that, well, every year that I've been here, we go for that grant, and it's a wonderful opportunity that the federal government provides, and that we follow up on by using those resources, so, and they are expensive, so. It's a nice, it's, it's, it's a true help to our budget when it comes to the police department.
Sure, the chief probably remembers, I think the first time the department ever had any vest was the FOPA. And purchased them for you. So that goes back, I was beating the streets.
That's a lot of years, and they were a lot heavier back then, too, I might add.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please. All right, so I have a motion to approve resolution eighteen dash twenty and a second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion does carry. Did anybody else have any comment they wanted to make? I'm sorry, I rushed it.
Me too.
Next, liquor permits.
All right, Mayor, I have a liquor permit request, it's a new one for Northwood LLC doing business as Our Taco. Ohio Division of Liquor Control sent police the notification, reference a new D one, D two, D three, D three A liquor permit for Northwood LLC doing business as Our Taco, twenty-seven sixty Town Drive. The records checks required by the Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control were conducted on the business officer shareholders for this application request, and staffs recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
You do, I'd like to make a motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept without comment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you. Next, decision item. The first quarter financial summary.
The, we provided the copy of the first quarter two thousand and eighteen financial summary, I think it was a week and a half, two weeks ago, to counsel. If there's any questions, Mr. Casera and myself are here to answer any questions.
Anyone? Okay, so do I have a motion to accept?
Sir Mayor, I move to accept the first quarter two thousand and eighteen financial summary.
Second. Have a motion and a second to accept the first quarter two thousand and eighteen financial summary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you. Oh, we got board appointments here. Just one? Okay. So, we have appointments for the Youth Development Committee, so do I have a motion to open nominations?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second?
Motion and a second to open nominations for the Youth Development Committee. I have any nominations?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Cherish Gillespie.
I would move that nominations be closed.
All right. We have a motion and a second to close nominations, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. The only one nominee, then we will appoint Cherish Gillespie to the Development Committee. We don't need to vote on that, correct? Do you need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Cherish Gillespie to the Youth Development Committee Board, and the term ends February twenty-eighth of nineteen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you. It is now the City Managers' Report.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. We first begin with the Beaver Creek Police Department, and not to be outdone this year, City Hall, open house. We don't want the police to have all the fun with their open house, so we're gonna open City Hall. This is going to take place this Saturday, May nineteenth, from eleven AM to two PM. We're opening both buildings and having activities. Police will be doing demonstrations, vehicle displays, Care Flight will be here, that was a great site last year. Food and family fun, and many activities. We'll go, also have City Hall open, and we'll be having things set up here, and departments will be doing various things from finance to engineering. We'll be having the city cameras to show traffic and how that works, planning's gonna have some maps. Mr. Casera's gonna be passing out money.
Is Mr. Casera gonna have his budget boards present?
Yeah, he might have a few budget boards, but we're, we've got some tricks that we're doing, so the kids are gonna love it, some piggy banks and stuff, so they're gonna enjoy it. We're also going to, if you do the tour of the City Hall, you'll be able to win a round of golf for four at the Beaver Creek Golf Club, and/or a certificate from the parks for recreational, fifty, fifty dollar gift certificate from the parks. And that will go towards just a park programming that you may want from the kids, and, and different events for the parks, so that's good. Engineering Department, like I said, will watch live traffic feeds, and council chambers here will have various council members that have agreed to show up, and Mayor and Vice Mayor. And I have a picture with these, maybe play Mayor for the, for a moment with, and doing a selfie. So good fun for the kids, time, a good time to see the kids, see government in action as well, so to speak, and, and of course, the public to ask questions. So that is this Saturday, eleven to two.
Will the lift be opened for ride?
At your own risk. We, we, we do have a lift that is a. That, that, that will be only if you sign a release of liability. That's our, what would you say, handicap accessibility to the second floor.
But it works so well.
It works so well, the mayor used it for his knee, so it takes five, ten minutes to get up, but, you know.
Truly uplifting.
Yes, truly uplifting. Okay, next, Indian Ripple Road whitening. Work is anticipated to begin this week, weather dependent, weather permitting, so the contract was awarded to CG Construction for whitening an Indian Ripple road between Darsh Road and Marydale Drive. So this is gonna include the sidewalk along the south side of Indian Ripple and the installation of new lighting as well. Some lane closures and traffic delays should be anticipated during this construction, so just a heads up, it's beginning. I won't even talk about, you know, Dayton-Zenia, we continue to bear with us, please, on that, it's going well. It's just going to, like I said, we'll get through May, get through June, and hopefully end of June, first week of July, we'll, we'll be finishing it up. Moving on to parks, there's so many events in parks taking place. The park has a park board meeting, which I just posted to Facebook, and in that Facebook post is a YouTube video that showed the last park board meeting, I believe it was last week, which shows a division report given by, by staff, and a park report given by staff. And it really goes over all the functions, what's, the, the functions for the previous month, the results, what's coming up. It's very informative, just to watch the video and get a lot of information, more than I have time to share here. But speaking of just a couple of up, up events, this Saturday, again, is, at Phillips Park, is eight AM for a kids' fishing derby, so you can go do that, and then come to the open house and get lunch, so that's a good, a good thing. And that's at Phillips Park from eight-thirty to ten-thirty, followed by Hair Raising Science with Mr. C. and prizes. Tom Burt Memorial Golf Scramble, that's a fundraiser for Beaver Creek, City of Beaver Creek and Fairborn Parks and Recreation. That's Friday, May twenty-fifth, at the Beaver Creek Golf Club, eight-thirty AM shotgun start, breakfast and lunch provided. And lastly, for the Parks and Rec is Memorial Day Ceremony coming up Monday, May twenty-eighth, two PM, Veterans Memorial Park. Guest speaker is Brigadier General Gregory Guterman, Director of Air Force Security Assistance and Cooperation Directorate. So that's all coming up. And, and lastly, I just wanted to, a couple of things, since our last meeting, we've had a couple of weeks. Wanted to congratulate Soyn Medical Center, again, we were at the Radiation Therapy Center ribbon cutting, that was great to have that. It's one of those things, you, you're so glad they have it, but one of those things you hope you never have to go through. But it's very great that the community, it saves our residents time to traveling all over the place trying to get such treatments. I wanted to, I went to the brunch yesterday for Mother's Day brunch, they had a record, and I was at the two o'clock showing, and it was a total of, a total of five hundred and nine, so that was a record served. Five hundred and nine. And the last thing I wanted to say, so Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, it was great seeing everyone. And the last thing I wanted to say is in touch magazines or, or letters are in the mail, should already be received, if you haven't received one, it's also online. Yep, she's got it. And speaking of those lists of park programs, it's in there, so that can really be your guide through the whole summer, almost of all the activities that's going on through our Parks and Recreation Department. And that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. I got to scratch off a couple items, 'cause you already covered them here, and that's good. But we do, I want to remind everybody, this weekend is the Memphis Bell Display at the Air Force Museum. It is gonna be a lot going on, the, but I think it's, from everything I've seen, it's gonna be worth fighting the traffic to get out there, at least for a day. Supposed to, gonna be a wonderful event. I had the privilege of judging two different contests, so to speak, not really contest. The Department, Green County Department of Developmental Disabilities has a Ready to Work Program, and I was honored to be asked to be a judge, to help judge the skills of some of the students. And it is one of those very emotional events that you sit there and you're, and you know that some of these kids are just very brilliant, more so than what appears sometimes. But it is also just an honor to be able to be part of that effort. This is their second year, and it's, it's designed so that, to help the teacher understand what it is that student might need to brush up on in order to possibly go through a job application. On the other end, I had the, I had, got to judge debating teams at the STEM School over on Woodman Drive, and that was just as interesting. And the debate topic was, are we better off at the end of the twentieth century than we were at the beginning of the twentieth century? So I'm sure some of these students argued points that they didn't really believe in, but they had to, I mean, but the, it was very interesting to do. So it's, it's things like that that go on in the community that I just want to share and let everybody know is going on. And that's all I have, and if we want to start over here, council member current.
I just had a question, is the road gonna be for the May nineteenth, for the nineteenth, is that?
Microphone.
Oh.
Got it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is the road gonna be open up there for the public to get in and out pretty easily?
It depends on where they are, depends on where they are in construction, but it, it will be open, yes.
All right.
And.
I just wondered, there's so many barrels and.
Yeah.
Tough enough getting in here.
It's tough enough, but the, the only thing we have, I thought, I think we verified is that last year, we were, it kinda surprised us at the open house last year, that they had games going on behind us.
All right.
And our parking lot was almost full. This year, there's supposedly no games going on, so there should be plenty of parking for those, and we did get permission to use overflow parking in their parking lots if needed.
All right, okay.
So as long as, I don't think they'll be doing construction on Saturday, I'm not sure if they're doing construction on Saturday or not, but it should be open and accessible.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Upden. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Stone, just a quick comment to bring some awareness to an issue. I attended the most recent Miami Valley Regional Planet Commission meeting, and they did a little presentation on a recent traffic study that the commission had commissioned, dating from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and sixteen. And they looked at, outside of major highways, mostly arterias and feeder roads, crashes, accidents, and other mishaps that happen on the road, and ranked intersections and areas, you know, one, one to one hundred. And Beaver Creek had two that kinda jumped out at me, I was kinda surprised. Ranking on the number eleventh most dangerous intersection in Miami Valley was National Road and Colonel Glen. Which, you know, I don't think of it, but, you know, there is a lot of traffic that goes through there. Absolutely. So first off, anybody at home watching, please, you know, be careful going through that intersection, and, you know, be aware of your surroundings and what's going on there. But then also, probably just as surprising to me, number thirty-three on the list was from, on Dayton-Zenia Road, from North Fairfield to Haynes, that, that section of the road there. Ranked number thirty-three most dangerous roadway in the Miami Valley. And.
And I'm not gonna point anything of it.
Well, this is from fourteen to sixteen, so. You know, prior to our construction, hopefully some of the construction on Dayton-Zenia will alleviate some of that, but just, just a reminder, be careful out there. I know in Dayton-Zenia, there's a lot of entrances to different drive-throughs and restaurants and shops there, so just be aware of people entering the road and exiting the road, and be careful, and, you know, I don't know if we need to look at some of those roadways as a community, and see what we can do to improve lights, or stripes, or whatever it might be, you know, maybe we need to take a look at that. But full commission report is available, and I'm happy to send it to you if you didn't get it already.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Little.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Vice Mayor Garcia and I are on the Fourth of July Committee, and so I know Memorial Day's right around the corner, but so is Fourth of July, the way it's already going. So Mr. C. is coming for the Fourth of July, and there's some wonderful festivities, and the parade naturally will start at six PM, and so please get your parade applications in so that you can be in the parade. There's gonna be some other guests, some great music, some vendors selling food, and then of course, the food trucks. And so it looks like it's coming together very well, the team is doing a wonderful job, the committee that's going on that has, they really have everything in line and ready to go, and I think there's only one more meeting until the festivities will begin. So I just want to thank everyone for all their excellent work on that, I wasn't able to go to one of the meetings, but great job, wonderful, and Mr. C., I'm sure, will have everybody happy as he always does, so. And then the second thing is back to our, this is one of my favorite things we get, and then I just wanted to highlight, you can find everything that you need, but our Summer in the Parks series, so, you know, you want to mark that on your calendars now. We also have the Party in the Parks, which is great, so if you live in different areas of the city, Seville Farm Estates, Stafford Park, E.J. Nutter Park, and Walnut Grove Park all have the little Party in your Parks, which are great, especially if you live in those areas. And then, of course, the Summer Concert Series, which is always excellent, begins June third, so just right around the corner, and that is five, and then every week from then on out through the summer, you don't want to forget that. And then, of course, the Movie in the Parks are great, so just wanted to remind everything, parks are a tremendous asset to the city of Beaver Creek, and so I love the parks, I love everything that we have with them, and our green space, and the city has committed to making sure our parks are some of the best in the area, so. Just wanted to make sure and remind everybody how important our summer guide actually is, and I think that's what we really should call it in there, so, that's it.
My wife Margaret found an item in there that she's gonna check out.
I, I love it, I read, I read everything, 'cause, you know, just because you're on council, you may not, you know, you think you know, and you'll see that, I was like, oh, I didn't know that was going on, so, great things to do in the city of Beaver Creek.
Councilmember Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and in similar vein to Mr. Upton, I just want to bring attention to just south on Grange Hall, just south of Dayton-Zenia, the, the bike trail path with the new yield signs. Very much appreciate those, however, I've frequently noticed some drivers not somewhat aware that the, you know, they still have the right of way. Had a couple instances where the car in front of me immediately stopped and thought they were maybe stop signs or what have you, and I know our social media has been updated to reflect that. You know, they're put in to bring awareness to bicyclists, and to ensure that, you know, we have safety for them, but to also make sure that, you know, vehicles still have their right of way to continue traffic through that area. It's been a busy past few weeks, not going to list all my engagements, but I do want to especially highlight the Youth Council, and congratulate all the seniors. Wasn't that long ago where I was graduating as a member of the Youth Council, and it just shows that the opportunities the city provides to the youth, but also that, you know, we are cultivating future leaders, that hopefully one day we place us around this table, and we place different boards and committees, and to really get involved. And there's so many people in the community, one sitting next to me, Councilmember Van, and Felicia Hall, who was here, who have started this organization from really the ground up, and have made it successful to what it is today. So I just appreciate their dedication for that. That is it.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
We hosted informational session about the medical marijuana, and I think that it was well received in the community, I think there were a lot of, a lot of information, and I think all the comments that I've heard have been positive, so I think that the citizens appreciate that we provided some facts and informative information. I think there's some interest in having a follow-up, I don't know if we're gonna schedule it or not, but there's some interest in doing something again in the fall. The other shout-out that I wanted to do is Saturday, beyond all these other things that's going on, is graduation day for Beaver Creek seniors, and that's at Nutter Center at nine o'clock in the morning, so congratulations to all the, the students who have gone to school in Beaver Creek and, and will be graduating on this Saturday morning.
Thank you, and I will echo that I gave you thumbs up at the meeting the other night that you, you put together, and I learned quite a bit, so I would just like to say that, repeat that it, it was educational to plenty of people.
Thanks.
So thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. So this past month, I attended the Family and Children First Committee meeting, and one of our presenters was Liz Hale from NAMI, which is National Alliance on Mental Illness. So May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and in going with that theme, what they had was Liz come and talk about this parent-run program, that's called the Parent Advocacy Connection. And the special thing about this program, it's run by parents who have had a lot of children go through what they call multi-systems involved, so use a lot of the systems in Green County that need help or special needs, and these parents act as peer supporters to other parents who have children with similar needs, and they go, the parents who want to be in this program stay about six months to two years, depending on how much need they actually have. And it's just a very good way for parents who are new to the system to learn what, what meetings they need to go to, where they need to be, who they should talk to, and it just seems like a very good way to get other people involved who are new to the systems. Just a few other updates, the Green County Commissioners are working on jail reform regarding treatment for inmates in the facility. Green Cats has weekend flex routes that connect Fairborn, Yellow Springs, and Beaver Creek. There's going to be, Zenia is hosting a Beyond the Opioid Epidemic, Dressing Addiction and Mental Illness Presentation on May fifteenth from seven to nine, and that's at the Zenia Nazarene Church. And just to end too, I want to remind everybody again, it is National Police Week, so from here until, I think it's May, is it the nineteenth? Wear your blue, have your lights out, Beaver Creek Lowe's sold out of blue lights, I think about a week before Police Week, so if you can find any, those are a great addition to your home, but just thank you to the Beaver Creek Police Department and everything they do to keep our city safe.
Thank you.
Can I read these?
Just a second here, and, and I just want to follow up on Green Cats. There's, the director is, has an open invitation to anybody that wants to run around the county on, and Pete and I did it, I think somebody else did, Jared. But anyway, it's, it's worthwhile to spend a couple hours and take that, take that route. Now, you may please.
I would like to announce the May anniversaries. We have, we have super employees in the city of Beaver Creek, and this month, we will be celebrating the twenty years for Faith Lambert of the Police. Jeff McGrath of the Planning Department has been here for eighteen. Doug Steitner in Parks and Recreation Culture has been here for eighteen years. Heather Jolly from the Police Department has been here for fifteen years. Mike Thonero, Public Service, has been here fifteen years. Pat Tilt, Parks Recreation Culture, has been here for eleven years. Kim Farrell, Parks Recreation and Culture, has been here for ten years. Lori Herrera-Cambrone in Finance has been here for five years, and Jason Kleimer, Public Service, has been here for four years. Thanks to all of those employees for their service to our, our city, it makes a difference, and Pete is lucky to have such quality employees.
Thank you.
We are lucky, not just Pete, we are lucky.
And next on the agenda is citizen comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address counsel on any issue at all? Anyone? Young man, would you like to tell us who you are, and? No, are you with scouts?
Yes.
Come up and introduce yourself, please, we'd love to have the scouts here. Just give us your name and what troop you're with, if you don't mind.
Well, I'm Isaac Kasebeer. Well, I'm Isaac Kasebeer, and I'm here for. I'm Isaac Kasebeer, and I'm here for Troop Eight Seventy, and I'm working on a merit badge right now for citizenship in the community.
Very good, very good. All right, is there anyone else who would like to address counsel this evening? I won't pull anybody else up. Seeing none, we will move on, do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, thank you.